Okay, we have a public hearing this evening for the County Essential School District District-wide Emergency Response Plan.
So just to recap, we sent you both the district-wide plan, which is also posted on the website that the public can see, and then each of the board members also received the individual building-level plans. That is confidential because it has names and contact information, as well as, of course, our specific safety procedures that we don't want to be out in the public. I did get a couple of editing suggestions from a few board members, so we have, Mrs. Jacobson changed all of those. I did, Sue, you asked me some questions specific to the building-level plans. I will send, I was going to get them out here, but I can't really do that, so I'll send them out as a response to everyone tomorrow in the email. But other than that, if there are any questions, it really did not change from previous year, other than updating names and contact information.
Yeah, I mean, I took a look at it, and I noticed some of those editing, so I'm happy that some of the board members already let you know that, so I'm good with the documents.
Yeah, and I'm really not sure, the district-wide plan, I think something must have happened in moving from one year to the next, because the amount of errors, and Carly actually said she found more than the ones that Sue had sent, so I don't know if somehow it was an old version, that it flipped things, but yeah, it really was way more than I've ever seen before, so I'm not sure, but thank you for taking the time to go through that.
Me too. As soon as I saw the 2019, I went in, and I saw that obviously the middle school principal had been changed, so everything were edits made to the document.
Okay, is there any questions regarding the Emergency Response Plan from our audience? Anything come aboard? So we'll close our public hearing, and we'll open the meeting up to public comment for agenda items on them. We'll close public comment, and move right on with our meeting. Acceptance of reports being resolved, the Board of Education, upon recommendation of superintendent, approves and acknowledges reviewing the following reports: Board of Education Meeting, October 6th and 20th, 2020; May voter report, October 2020; and our treasurer's report, October 2020. Motion, please. Motion by Camille, seconded by Mike. Discussion? No discussion. All those in favor? Aye. opposed? So carry. Our principal's report, Joel.
Hello? So you have my principal's report that I submitted. I do want to just publicly acknowledge my faculty and staff for the way that they came together and worked very hard to make sure that our last two days with students at home on an all-remote basis have gone through so well. When we got the call on Sunday, we made the determination that we would let teachers come in, because many were pretty panicked that they didn't have the materials that they could remotely teach from home. So Sunday afternoon, I came in from 2:30 to 3:30, and we had 23 teachers that showed up and picked up the supplies they needed to get through the two days. So it was a beautiful day, and it was very difficult to expect them to come in, but quite honestly, they were the ones pushing to come in to get their things. So just a shout-out to them for all their diligence. The only update to my report is that since this report, I have had a few more phone calls and emails. Today, I got a couple of parents looking to change either from remote to hybrid or hybrid to remote, and it doesn't seem like it's a consensus thing. Some are going one way, some are going the other, so it's not even like you can predict what those changes will be, but I still am in good shape and should be able to accommodate any parents that get in contact with me. And some of them actually had asked if they didn't have to do it this week, could they wait until after Thanksgiving? And of course, we're looking for people to make commitments so that we can stay in line, but the difference at the elementary school from the other two schools is a change, for me, only changes the teacher for that one classroom, whereas a change at the other two schools becomes more difficult, because you're changing seven and eight different teachers, and it really wrecks havoc on their schedule. So I have made accommodations for some parents to hold out in the week until after the Thanksgiving break, and then we'll go from there. Any questions?
I am gonna, I'll discuss a little bit about the closure yesterday and today, but I do want to thank Mr. Freer for his dedication. I mean, he was more than happy to go in on Sunday, but Joel and Sarah's professionalism on Sunday to make the decision as a team was great, and again, I'll go a little bit further, but thank you, and to the years to come.
Thank you.
Any questions for?
Yeah, just a question on the secretary. Is that a new position or one that?
It is not. My, the last board meeting, you accepted the retirement, or resignation of, I can't say the name, I guess, my secretary, who has, was with the district for a number of years.
Okay.
And moved from the area, so we requested the list. The list just got to us, so we're looking to, we're doing our best to not rush the process, and I can tell you that the list is not very deep, but it's a service thing, so we have to go through their process, and we hope to have those interviews completed. I haven't told Mr. Darling this yet, but I believe that we're gonna do them the night of parent-teacher conferences, since we're already at the building, and then I will afford candidates the opportunity to interview in the evening, rather than taking time off during, if they're already in a position. So that's my thinking on that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Just one more thing. There is someone here this evening that is out on his birthday, so we'd like to say happy birthday to Mr. Darling.
In that case, we should say a belated birthday to Ms. Camille Adoma as well.
Mr. Judge?
Hello, everyone. I do not have any additions to my principal's report, but I, following up on the information that Mr. Freer gave, we have had additional requests come in after the time that I wrote the principal's report. We are close to 20 students looking to switch models. However, that number is fairly even with the amount of kids wanting to come in versus the kids wanting to go out. Of course, it's not as balanced by grade level, that would be way too easy, but for overall number of kids in the building, it's going to remain pretty consistent. While they don't have updates, I do want to give some shout-outs to some of our awesome faculty members. So our faculty is not letting all the COVID restrictions mean learning is boring at the middle school. And if you were at the middle school over the past week, week and a half, you would have seen science classes visiting the woods and the streams, doing labs outside. That was in Ms. Harris's class, she's been doing awesome hands-on learning. Today, in her class, when I visited, they were building molecules, which was super awesome. And then Ms. Coburn and I have been in the seventh-grade English classes the past couple of days, where Mr. Cattieri and Ms. Curcio made their own version of Shark Tank, where the students had to come up with a plan to propose to the sharks, and we were the sharks, of how to change the world and make it a better place. So there's a lot of really great activities happening to try to keep kids motivated and involved in learning, even with all the restrictions that we are working with. So I just want to give a shout-out to all of the middle school faculty that are working so hard to try to make learning real during this period.
Any questions for Mr. Judge?
Thank you.
Mr. Murphy?
Good evening, everyone. Mr. Zimmer was not able to make it this evening, so I'm here to present that is bad. Couple of updates on the information that I can already forward to you in this report. Additionally, as of today, we have 11 as a combination of all remote to hybrid and hybrid to all remote. The breakdown is 1th grade, ninth grade for remote to hybrid, 10th grade, four students from hybrid to remote, again, 10th grade, two students, remote to hybrid, grade 11, two students, remote to hybrid, and grade 12, one student, remote to hybrid, two students, hybrid to remote, for again, a total of 11. That's the difference in terms of eight that Mr. Zimmer sent to you on this report. And just to recap, the information that was in here, as far as the schedule changes in receiving those requests, Mr. Avantio, we already notified parents that if they wasn't interested in making those changes, that they should reach out to Principal or Guidance Office. The deadline for making that request was Monday yesterday. Our evacuation rule for the annual county-wide emergency rule was conducted on November 5th, in accordance with the county-wide evacuation expectations. The high school dismissed in 20 minutes, for a little bit unusual. Parent-teacher conferences will be held from 5:00 to 8:00 on Thursday, November 19th, and from 8:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. on Wednesday, November 25th. Parents can sign up on schoolappointments.com to meet with teachers to conference for 10 minutes about their children's progress in the class. Parents will have the option for a virtual or telephone conference on that time. And lastly, school pictures with LiveTouch will be held at high school on Monday, November 16th, for Core Board One, and Friday, November 20th, for Core Board Two. We're working with LiveTouch to develop a plan to offer a time for remote students to have their pictures taken, if parents are interested as well.
Any questions for Mr. Murphy? Thank you.
Can I just interrupt and ask Mr. Judge, just a question, sorry to go back. On your report, the preparations for Q2 and some of the changes that might have to be made just to make sure that we're meeting special education requirements, is that based on evaluations that were done throughout the beginning of the year that were maybe anticipated, or what led, what's leading to those changes?
We need to make sure that we have appropriately certified people teaching in the right sections for the various student needs and all of the requirements.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, director's report. I have, I believe, every one of our directors here this evening, so if you have questions for our directors, I'm sure they'll be able to answer those questions.
Patrick? I just, I want to let you know, this came to me secondhand, but my husband was speaking to a parent of a child who has special needs, and they moved from Dutchess County to here, and he says that your program, by far, he gave him accolades as opposed to the services that his child received when they lived in Dutchess County. I don't know any names, I don't know anything, but I just wanted to pass that along. Great job.
Mr. Boy, I got one question. In your report on their homeschool, you show a total of 66. Now, that's mainly due to the pandemic? I mean, we normally don't have 66 students at a homeschool.
Last year, we had 28.
28.
Yeah, so we have seen a big increase this year.
Do we, are we obligated to monitor their progress? And, I mean, do you have the ability, because now you have 66 compared to 28, to be able to track this and monitor it in a timely fashion?
It's added to the responsibilities, but yes, so we have quarterly reports, and the first quarter is due November 20. Some parents are just starting to get them in now, but it can be problematic with getting the reports. Just in the beginning, there's a lot of chasing down to get the plans that are required, and then once we get the plans, we get the quarterly reports. So some families are, you know, right on top of it and getting it, and some others require some monitoring. So it is in addition to our staff or department trying to keep track.
And they have the ability to opt-in and out as far as homeschooling, too?
Yeah, so we had that, you know, pretty frequently over the past two months. So we've had a lot in August that, I mean, we got this back and forth that weren't sure. You know, we talked a lot on the phone, and went through a lot of the options, and then I just had one swiftly over there.
Thank you. Anyone else have questions for our directors?
There's a news clip where program, like Carol had mentioned, and Karen and children's grade of, I think it's engagement or cooperation, can we hear a little bit more about that? Or we may have?
Is that IXL?
Yes, yes. We, we can, we can look at that.
Oh, sure, we can look at, so Karen, not right this moment, but yes, we can work on showing you what it's like.
Along those lines, I was thinking of this, only because my, I know members of the board are always interested. Is there a way, so we gave two assessments recently, I think one's more ELA and the other one's math. One could be IXL. Is there, we could, is there a way we could see just a blank copy of those assessments?
So we're looking at the, right now, the math benchmark assessments are occurring across the district, so yes, we could share those. Those are K8, and then ELA would be the STAR testing.
Let's go, let's go with the ninth, I don't want you to bring the whole stat for everybody, but let's, let's look at the ninth grade assessments.
Ninth grade, we don't.
You didn't do those. They're K8?
They're K8.
Let's look at the sixth grade.
Sixth grade, okay. We can do that.
And I have one question. Kathy, in regards to drivers, how are we right now as far as bus drivers? Are we lacking any, or we need to hire?
We do need to hire.
There's a mic coming.
A mic coming.
There's a mic.
Hire them.
No one knows, can hear me.
Follow my directions.
All right, so we do, we're managing because of less students on the bus, so we can, somebody that doesn't have some students from high school or elementary, depending, is it Core Board One or Two, we can move that driver around to accomplish getting the children in. So we are managing, unfortunately, this is one thing about the pandemic, the benefits of some transportation right now, to make all the runs work. There's some schools that only work two days a week, so we can use those drivers as well. So we are managing, we do have advertising out in the paper and signs on 9W.
Thank you. Yeah, Kathy, you mentioned. You mentioned in your report, 15 to 18 students a day going to school, and 15 to 18 on the back end of the day.
Yeah, so the most children we have on a bus right now for high school is 15 to 18 children. That doesn't mean every run, that may mean only one or two runs, to the same amount going home. So we're definitely in the right amount of children that we want on a bus that they're being separated.
What about elementary?
Elementary is even less. More than a bus, it's on elementary buses. They're averaging 10 to 15, maybe.
Is 18 about the maximum you can have, your district's?
Right now, 20.
20.
You can have more for siblings, who would love to sit together.
Thank you. Anyone else have any questions for the directors? And I ask because we're videoed, and it's available to all our community members. Please speak into the mic so everyone can hear you and hear the questions you're asking. Does anyone else have any questions for our directors? I just have one other one for Carol. Carol, I know we have a lot of staff members working from home remotely. Have you seen much difficulty in their connection to the service, to be able to touch base with your students? Is there any downtime there that you have to get involved, or they have to get involved with your own home service to correct the issues?
No, I, we haven't seen anybody complaining about their internet service, and teachers are doing great from home. If they need something from school, they get it, they're allowed to get it. And even in the last, the chaos of the elementary school in the last couple of days, which is one teacher who called with a question. I mean, they're doing phenomenal out there. And we support parents mostly right now, and students, and really, they're just log-on issues, or where to go and get the resource, and really, I think things are going with the teachers. I think they're fantastic. But I haven't had any complaints about service from their homes.
And with your staffing, you're able to stand on top of the help desk? Any concerns coming in?
We get a little behind in the help desk sometimes, but most of the parents that need immediate help, they call. They'll call the school building, and they go to student tech office, and we're pretty, I feel we're pretty on top of that. A lot of parents still walk in and just say, I just want a new one because I can't get this connected home. We walk them through it. You know, it seems to be working well, I think.
Thank you. And just to clarification, for Maria on food service, I'm reading that, right, 14,000 breakfasts and lunch as of October 30th?
Yeah, it just sounds glittery.
Right.
Parents are picking up, and for meals that are almost half a month.
I gotta commend your staff for, I mean, that's a lot of lunches and breakfasts going out.
A lot of breakfasts.
In, since September, or since we came back?
September.
Wow, that's a lot. So kudos to your staff, if you're able to, and the rest of the school community that's helping out to make that happen. Thank you. Nice job, Maria. Yeah, Frank Fonso, Tuesday and Thursday nights, you have your training nights?
Yes.
And how long will that be going on for?
Our last stage is November 24th, November 24th is your last stage.
All right, and is there plans to bring that back going into the springtime, post-winter time?
We'll have to wait and see what availability of doing stuff inside. I know Mr. Avantio is gonna talk about athletics in a little bit, so some of those things will be answered then, but no, we're doing everything outside right now, so once the November 24th is done, we'll be done with our outside program.
All right, especially with the new artificial turf field, the old tennis courts, we should be able to utilize that under ideal conditions outside, correct?
Yes, but we're limited with daylight right now. So, you know, we don't start that before 4:00, so we only get about maybe 45 minutes on that field.
All right, and obviously, there's lighting, there's lighting there, but there's plans for new lighting on those, on that area. When that happens, will you then utilize that too?
Yes, I mean, the original plan would be, we would utilize that in spring and fall, you know, in a normal school year, and have teams out there privacy.
What's the status of that lighting? Unfortunately, you have such beautiful weather, I think you'll use it for a short period. Any update on the lighting for that field?
If Mr. Miller can give us an update, he'll go up to the podium. Thank you, Frank.
The purchase order has been written for it, and Musco is preparing to move forward with it. The only thing we've talked about is controls. We can use the old controls, but we're looking at updating them so that the coaches will be able to run, make from the phone, so they can turn the lights on and turn them off without having to go into the building.
Sure.
But that's in process. The construction trailers that are out there are probably going to be moved out shortly, and when they're moved out shortly, we'll have the lights on the field backup to the controls that were there. So even the old lights might be working before the new lights are installed.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Miller, just a quick question, sorry. Staffing-wise, in terms of cleaning and sanitizing, I know you put in your report that they're maintaining, just overall, is there additional that you would want to do given staffing, or do you feel it's appropriate based on what you have right now?
The lights are, the lights are on. Oh?
Thank you.
Anyone else have any questions for our directors? Thank you, guys. Okay, approval on committee on special education minutes. Be resolved, Board of Education, upon recommendation of superintendent, accept the following recommendations of CPSC and CSE committees, according to the information provided in regards to meetings in classified status of students. Meeting date range, October 6th, 2020 to October 28th, 2020. All meetings are held virtually, either through Microsoft Teams or Zoom platforms. Total, 23 meetings held. Motion, please. Motion by Tom, seconded by Mike. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? So carry. Pleasure on personnel. Would you like to take personnel as a block from A through I with an addendum adding J and K? Is there any one item you want to pull out and address separately? We could do that. So on your desk, there is an addendum with J as a resignation and K as a termination.
I'm good to go for a block.
Everyone else is good to go? Okay, I have a motion to take personnel as a block from A through K. Motion by Mike, seconded by Ed. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? So carry.
And Mr. President, just want to note, on the retirement, so Eugene Hayes, bus driver, essentially known as Judd to everyone, he's going to be sorely missed. He was really a fantastic employee, a great driver. You know, I always say it's all about relationships, and he had fantastic relationships with the students on his buses, with his fellow drivers, with the administrators. So we certainly wish him well. I believe he's moving to warmer weather, and we wish him all the best. Thank you for his 10 years of service.
And I think that's recognized by the entire board. Okay, business in operations, budget transfer. Be resolved, Board of Education, upon recommendation of superintendent, approves the following budget transfer for the 2020-2021 school year as presented to the board at this meeting. Budget number 2971 for $73,000, budget number 3225 for $40,000, and budget number 3368 for $59,000. I have a motion, please. Motion by Sue, seconded by Camille. Discussion?
Mrs. Tulek, could you just review those for the warning for the public?
Certainly. The $73,000 transfer is specifically for the social studies position at the middle school. The $40,000 transfer is a temporary school monitor position, I believe, at the middle school. And the last transfer of $59,000 is for substitute teacher salaries on those teachers who are taking leave and staff development for diversity.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? All in favor? Opposed? Opposed? So carry. Change orders. I will not read all 15 change orders. We'll make one resolution to accept the change orders. If you have any questions, please let us know. We'll try to explain the change orders as we move forward. Just one note, change order number 14 and 15 are related to our previous capital project. And that's where we're installing the generator. I believe that's at the bus garage. Peter?
Yes.
And we are upgrading the auditorium lighting as we sit here. Okay, so we have change orders for our current project that's 1 through 13 and for the previous project, number 14 and 15. So I'll read a resolution and then we'll have an acceptance and then we can discuss it. Be resolved Board of Education upon recommendation, Superintendent. Approve the following change orders as presented to the Board of Education at this meeting. Can I have a motion, please? Motion by Heather, seconded by Ed. Any discussion?
Just a quick question to you, you called out number 14 and 15 from the previous project. Were those alternates that we were able to then include?
Peter can answer that one, yes.
They were not, they were unexpendables from that project. They were moved forward to use that money to complete things of similar nature that we were doing before that. The generator at the bus garage wasn't alternative. The lighting in here and some of the things that we did in doing it here are similar as what we were doing before, which is permanent.
Thank you.
Is there a generator for the high school?
The high school is on generator. The only building that does not have generator at this point is the middle school.
And what types of systems do we have on those generators wired up in case power fails?
The generators are typically for IT emergency, power for refrigeration, and some emergency lighting depending on the building.
And is that wiring in place and they're backed up by those systems?
Correct.
Thank you.
Just a quick question. Isn't the main committee that they were on this, isn't the middle school a shelter of some sort for them?
Oh, there was discussion years ago about buildings being shelters. And we had conversations, I think Mr. Bon Jovi and I had conversations with the Red Cross. And we were talking about the high school and the elementary school. At the time, the Red Cross did not have adequate staffing to expand their list of shelters, so it never moved forward. Neither, no school is designated, David does a shelter.
Okay, thank you.
Peter, I'm sorry. Can we go back to the lighting upgrades? I guess I'm just confused that the initial contract was a certain amount back in 2015. But now we're going for $115,000 more of work. So was this always planned or is it because we have to spend this money?
Most of it is based on the fact that the money is available. That was in that project that was approved. And it was work that was originally listed that was not necessarily included in the project when it was put out to bid because of what they thought were at that time cost restrictions.
So from what I understand with Lisa, we had about $900,000 unspent from that project. So now you're down to about seven and change?
None.
We're probably about half $600,000.
I didn't get that.
Probably about $500,000 to $600,000.
That we still need to spend?
Yes.
And what's the deadline on that?
The, well, right now, there isn't a deadline.
There isn't, yeah.
There will, Bernie Guyans folks will be here before the next board meeting in January. January 12th to 14th. We'll have a joint meeting with support services and audit committee to review the financials from the 17.5 million and the capital reserve.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe since we do have several open contracts from that 1415 project, we're allowed to spend that money currently.
That is correct. All the change, oh, excuse me, not change orders. All of the final cost reports that the district can file for the 17.5 million dollar project have to file. Additionally, in June of 2020, the district asked the state education department for an early aid process. We have granted that, the district was granted that early aid process. So we have started to receive aid on the overall project, even though some of the final cost reports have not been submitted.
Is it also true if we don't spend all the money that the taxpayers approved through a bond resolution, that we have to give it back to the taxpayers?
If the district borrowed funds instead of paying cash for the whole project, those borrowed funds that are not spent go into a fund called the debt service fund. And the district currently has a debt service fund. Basically, it's just for bond proceeds. If the district had paid for a project with cash and we had unspent funds on that cash, not our money, then the funds would go back to the general fund. So cash goes back to general fund. Bond money goes to debt service fund.
Thank you. Any other questions? I have one question as it relates to the media center roof renovation. Do you expect any more change orders for that space? I know there's some change orders for steel and those kinds of things. As far as enclosing that space, anything on the horizon with that?
I would say no.
Thank you.
Lisa, my biggest concern, and you know how I feel about this, is we've already bonded out this money. So we have to pay it back, but we have money sitting that's unspent. So it's like taking out a $100,000 mortgage, paying on the mortgage, but we still have $30,000 sitting in our checking account that hasn't gone to anything. And that's just my biggest concern. It's just very unusual to me that it's already bonded out.
You're right. However, this 17.5 million dollar project has a contractor or two that has defaulted.
You gotta speak into your mic.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. I was getting feedback.
Your mouth's right up there. And I don't like that mic either.
So the 17.5 million dollar project has had contractors that have gone bump. We're still dealing with some of the liens against the main contractor. Mr. Miller has been chasing down the architect to get these change orders approved for approximately two years. So I'd like to commend Mr. Miller on his diligent efforts. This, to wrap up, this project has been a nightmare. There are funds that are remaining, you are correct. However, I think we'll see a concrete plan presented by our financial consultants going forward.
Okay, anyone else? All right, all in favor? Opposed? So carry. Sarah.
C and D.
Sorry.
C and D.
Transportation contract. Be resolved Board of Education upon recommendation, Superintendent. Approve the train, the attached transportation contract between Hanheim Central School District and parent of noted student for purpose of transportation during the period of November 2nd through June 28th, 2021. Can I have a motion, please? Motion by Camille, seconded by Tom. Discussion.
Because this is apparent to the child goes to a placement very far away. So the parent is driving them, they're being reimbursed just at the regular, you know, rate per mile.
All in favor? Opposed? So carry. Budget development calendar 2021-2022. Be resolved Board of Education upon recommendation, Superintendent. Approve the budget development calendar for the 2021-2022 school year as presented to the board at this meeting. Can I have a motion, please? Motion by Heather, seconded by Camille. Discussion. All in favor? Opposed? So carry. How do you like Sarah?
Okay, a couple of quick things. First of all, as mentioned by Mr. Murphy, I did want to let the community know parent teacher conferences this year will be done all remotely. We will not have any in-person parent teacher conferences. So please contact your building or go on and register for those parent teacher conferences. I know the elementary school has already been reaching out to their parents, but please we want to have that interaction with our parents. As many of you know, every month I have what we call our instructional council meeting, which is an opportunity for all of our grade level coordinators and department chairs to come together as a group to talk about initiatives and that kind of thing. Well, those are all, again, virtual this year because we can't have such a large group together. But what I'm doing in November is we've broken that larger group into smaller groups. So I'm having one hour meetings with, for instance, the K through 2 leaders or the 3 through 5 or the high school staff or the special area teachers. And the reason for that is, you know, sometimes, especially on Zoom, when you have everyone together, not everyone really gets to have a chance to talk. And I wanted to be able to check in with all of these, with our instructional leaders about how things have been going so far this year. So I've had three of those meetings so far. I have several more this week. But it's been very interesting. And again, I want to commend the technology department because that's my first question every time that I meet with a group about, okay, how is technology going? You know, we had so many, not necessarily unknowns about how it was really going to come out as far as bandwidth and Wi-Fi connection and all of those, but certainly concerns. And across the board, the concerns that teachers have brought up have been, I don't know, normal ones that I experience when I'm having a Zoom with family members across the country. You know, you have sporadic freezing of the screen or, you know, getting kicked out but coming back the enemy. It really has not, does not seem to be a problem, both for the teachers as well as for the students. I think the technology department, as well as each of the buildings, has done a really good job of connecting those students that we were able to connect. So I think that part of it is just going tremendously well. Also, the technology as far as students bringing their devices back and forth to school, that doesn't seem to be a problem. I haven't been hearing anything about that at all. I've also been talking with them about engagement. You know, are students logging in when they need to? Are they coming to school? And, you know, I think that one, depending on the building, there's a little bit of a difference. You know, our K2 students, their parents or a caregiver of some sort are generally right there with them, making sure that they're logging on and participating and all of that. And, you know, as you move older, it's a little bit more difficult. So we're watching that engagement question and we want to be able to keep it going throughout the school year. So, you know, they're definitely, as I dig deeper into the questions with the teachers, it does seem that it's a handful of students. And when I talk with the teachers, say, have you been, you know, have you been in contact with your building administrators? Every one of them has. You know, when I speak with the administrators, the same things. These are families very often who we worked with a lot previously as well. So we're really trying to stay on top of that engagement issue and making sure that our students are getting the most that they can from what we are offering, whether it's hybrid or remote. But for the most part, these conversations have been very positive. I usually end it with, you know, thinking ahead, moving forward. What can, you know, if you start to think about someday that we can bring more students in, what would you need or what could that look like? I would also say that overwhelmingly, you know, teachers want the students back in school the best that we can. So, you know, I think we're all trying to work towards that goal. There just are a lot of things that really have to fall in place before we can truly make that work. But again, I've been so impressed with what the teachers are sharing with me, what they have done to overcome or to adjust and adapt to the many changes that have been thrown their way since March, but even just since September or just since October. So, but overall, things are, I think, are going very well, at least with how they're recording to me and the conversations that we're having with administrators. So thank everyone for working so hard to bring everything together. And then I just wanted to do a quick update on our climate and culture racial equity initiative. As many people know, as the board all knows, we spent the executive session looking through the 28 applications that we have for 11 spots on our district wide committee. We will be contacting those people selected on Thursday when we're back in school. I think I can speak for everyone in saying that we were so impressed with the candidates that are the people that showed interest. It was very, very difficult to make these choices. And even if you did not get selected for this district wide committee, please know that there will be opportunities for you to share your voice in the district, either through subcommittees from our bigger district committee, through the building level committees. We really want you to be a part of this initiative across the board. So even if you're not selected for that committee, we definitely still want you to be involved in the work as we move forward. So, and we appreciate you taking the time to express your interest in that committee. Also, I will be attending, NISBA is offering a webinar on Monday, this Monday, the 16th, from 2:00 to 3:00. The title is "Bridging the Equity Divide Through Board Policy." I encourage any of the board members, if you've received that. It's the second part of, I believe it's a three-part series that the New York State School Boards Association is offering. I really enjoyed the first one. I think this one is going to be much more directed at sample policy and processes for districts moving through and these kinds of initiatives. So that should be really good. And I think that's all I have.
Any questions for Sarah?
Actually, I just had a comment. As you know, I'm on the board of BOCSIS and Joe Schaefer was talking about the levels of engagement too as opposed to taking attendance. And needless to say, it's challenging. And what they, what they're thinking about, I don't know if they've adopted it, instituting an engagement level as opposed to attendance. So level one would be not engaged, all the way up to level four, fully engaged. And they're going to track that.
Interesting.
Yeah. It's a challenge.
It is, and I think most of us knew that that was going to be, especially as we go through the long term of some of this. So, you know, the novelty may wear off fairly quickly. And again, I think as students get older, maybe you need to do, you know, it just needs to be so much more interactive or, you know, when you're comparing teachers, it's difficult.
Okay, Mr. Bon Jovi?
Thank you, Mr. President. I wanted to review for both the board and the public the procedure when we have to make a decision for a school closure because of COVID. Again, I do want to thank really everyone, it's been fantastic, from the spirit and staff to the community. So we received, so any staff members know that if they, you know, have tested positive, they contact their immediate supervisor immediately. So Mr. Freer did receive a phone call on Sunday and one of his teachers did end up testing positive. Now, that person actually had a family member who had tested positive earlier in the week. So that teacher had not been in school since November 2nd. So the Monday prior to the Sunday. So once I received that call from Mr. Freer, I contact, and this is what all superintendents do, so you contact Mark Reuter, who is the deputy county executive, and Dan Proctor, who is assigned by the county executive to be in charge of the COVID process from the Department of Health. So I was on the phone with both of them. I gave them the information on the employee. They contacted that employee, because remember, once it goes to the Department of Health, they're in charge of contact tracing. And what, actually, once they got all the information that the employee, when they were tested, when they tested positive, when was the last day? It was actually from Mark Reuter and from Dan Proctor that the school did not need to close necessarily because the person had not been in the building since Monday. In my conversation, though, with Mr. Freer, Mrs. David Lammick, and Mr. Barone, I felt it was prudent, it was ultimately my decision, I felt that that would cause a panic among people if we, at least on this initial case, positive case that we have from a staff member, that we did not close the building. If we just came in on a Monday morning and people knew that there was a positive case, I just don't think that would have gone over well in the public perception. It would have been very difficult to communicate all the information. So we did decide, as we said, out of an abundance of caution, to close just the elementary school from Monday and Tuesday, and then we're off tomorrow, the students will be back in on Thursday. Of course, the custodial staff continue with their regular cleaning procedures and protocol. This, you know, we will do this on a case-by-case basis, but as everyone knows, it is, you know, a scary time. It's been a scary time, and the positive cases are on the rise, we all know that. It's the highest it's been since last spring. We've been very lucky. Most of the, our surrounding schools in the county do have buildings closed, and they've been closed for quite some time, or they've been closed several times. So again, we will take each one on a case-by-case basis, but in this case, it was a Sunday going to a Monday, it was our first one, so that's why I made the decision to close the buildings for the two days and go all remote at the elementary. I did have a section on another topic now, second topic. I had a Section Nine meeting today, Mr. Alfonso is also on that Zoom meeting, and we discussed, of course, sports. So it did come down from the state, so this is that November thirtieth is the date for winter sports to start, which is the date that our section was starting. So winter sports will start on November thirtieth. Now, only low-contact sports can start. So for Highland, that is only boys and girls varsity bowling and boys and girls indoor track. So those are the only two sports that we can have starting. The higher-contact sports at this time cannot start. We anticipate in the next week, we were told, that there should be another announcement coming from the state regarding the high-risk sports, that being basketball, wrestling, and competitive cheer for Highland, as well as there are for some other sports. We also got the dates, again, this could change before that, but March first is now the official date for fall sports to begin. And April nineteenth is the official date for spring sports to begin. And our lacrosse merger for boys and girls varsity lacrosse with marble was approved by the section. Now, when we do have some competition, so again, the indoor track, the plan at the moment is that, weather permitting, some schools will have outdoor dual meets. Bowling, of course, is at the bowling alley, but there are no spectators going to be allowed at any section competitions. So there's no spectators at all. The point is that, you know, there's a limited number of people can be at any of these events, and we don't want to jeopardize the students' ability to have their competitions. So there's no spectators at all. I know that is a burden for some people. Again, once we get a date on basketball and wrestling, we'll make a public and final decision as to, you know, what Highland will be doing. But as of now, there will be no basketball or wrestling, starting on November thirtieth. The last thing is, I'd like to update the board and the public on support services and the current project. So we did have a lengthy meeting. I do want to thank, again, our board members who sit on that committee. It is, it's a lot of work, it's a lot of discussion from Mr. Moizel, Mr. Miller, Mr. Barone. Again, it is really, their experience is invaluable because, you know, not every board member really has, at all schools, has that expertise. So we're very lucky to have these gentlemen on that committee to make sure we're keeping, holding them to task, and I think we're doing a pretty good job of that. Yes. So let's talk about the, the main issue really is the roof, the standing seam roof, it's called, in the library. So from a distance, and I'll have, I'm going to give a general overview, and then I'll have Mr. Miller or any of the other committee members can jump in. So from a distance, it certainly looks very nice, I must say. The issue is, you know, it's a metal roof, and this type of roof, unlike ones on your house where it's kind of just screwed in every six to twelve inches, you know, this is, the seam comes together and then it's crimped, so it's bent all the way down, so it's about forty feet long, one side's bent over the other. And whatever happened, we don't know. The, it's very sloppily done, the bending, the crimping. It was, our man on site from Palermo did say that to the contractor while they were doing it, but they didn't stop, so they did finish that roof. So the issue is that, you know, certainly we have concerns that, you know, that roof, you know, could fail in the future because of those seams. So our architect, C.S. Arch, did initially, and if I get the terminology wrong, you can correct me, so basically, he rejected the roof. So we did not accept that as a finished product. So from here, there's several steps that have to happen. So the contractor then comes back to us with, you know, what corrective measures are they going to take? So one of, the corrective measure they're suggesting is that there are, it's basically like a cap that goes over the whole seam. So every seam on the roof, we have this metal cap which matches, it's the same material, it matches there. These are riveted on to the seam. He'll basically kind of put a finish, so you won't notice the sloppy, kind of bent seam along the roof. Obviously, from the road, from, you know, just from the sidewalk, you're not going to notice that. You really notice it when you're up on the roof, and you can see. So if it was your house, you wouldn't want that as a finished product. So we are currently, we're scheduling with them to, for them to give us a demonstration of the seam to see if it is acceptable to us. There are also different ceiling or, that has to be done along the roof, not the roof itself, but where the, you know, where it meets our current roof. There's some foam work that has to be done, and there is one of the windows that was installed, it cracked when it was installed, so they will be coming in the next week to replace that window. And that is the main issue. It is a serious issue, which is going to involve a lot more discussion, a lot of, there's a lot of kind of back-and-forth kind of compromise that happens with these contractors. So, you know, well, they'll do this, you know, but, you know, we're going to want something. So one of the things I know that we want is, we want the warranties to be extended because it wasn't installed correctly initially. Once that roof is completed and we've accepted it, really, we have to wait for that, then we can get in and paint the library, the inside of the library, put a new carpet in, and then get it set up for students. But that's probably not going to happen for a little while. I know that there are other issues that we discussed in the meeting, so I don't know, Mr. Barone, if you want me to go over any of the other topics we've talked about?
Just, just real quick, I know Director of Facilities, Mr. Miller, normally puts together agenda items that we discuss during our support service meeting. This meeting that we had today listed about ten or eleven items that are still not completed. Some are considered punch list items, which normally occur after, you know, substantial completion of a job. Some are due to delay in product, could be because of the virus or other reasons. But the three or four main areas that are still a concern is obviously that Mr. Bon Jovi mentioned, the high school roof. We do have some leaks that are associated with the glazing of the gable ends of that high school roof due to possibly, you know, flashing issues and/or some items not in place during the rainstorms. We have damage to our foam roof caused by the contractors in certain areas. Another large issue, and this has been on our table for quite some time in quite many projects, is a more presentable entrance to the central office, and this project, we were able to incorporate a canopy. So when visitors or even staff members come to that door and have to swipe in, and it's pouring rain, your card doesn't work, and I'm standing out there in the rain or snow, you'll have a canopy over your head. Well, unfortunately, there is a design issue and installation issue with that, so that's not taking place yet. And then everything else is basically a punch list item regarding this current capital project. So that's pretty much what the support service committee is dealing with, and the main concern, I believe, over the last several months have been the library or media center roof. I know we have that on our agenda as a capital update, but Mr. Miller, if you want to add or have anything else you want to add to the conversation, you can keep the board up on, up to speed on where we are and what our anticipation is for completion, and anything we left out.
Most of the items that are still out there, as Alan said, are punch list items that are being done at the elementary school, and chasing up loose ends there that have to be done. There's punch list items on the high school work in the central administration that has to be done. The ceiling is, the ceiling tiles that are put in were the wrong tiles, and they have to be replaced. They don't match the grid work. There are a few minor items that have to be done by Del Signor, which is the site work contractor to finish up. We met yesterday with the surpoms out in front of the building and approved that to move ahead to completion. But for the most part, everything's done except for the library at this point in time.
Thank you. And just quickly, what Superintendent was alluding to earlier was that the architect, C.S. Arch, had originally issued a letter of, a notice of noncompliance in regard to the standing seam roof and all the items associated with that roof and the flashing and such. And then I believe there was a meeting with the standing seam roof manufacturer, ATAS, several weeks ago, I believe it was, Peter?
Well, there was, the first meeting was with a warranty representative, and then between Palermo and C.S. Arch, they requested that the actual representative of ATAS come to the scene, come to the location, which he did, which was about the toilet or something. It was raining that day.
A week, a little over a week, a little, two weeks ago?
Yeah.
And that, we've got a report from the manufacturer of the standing seam roof, which kind of mentioned that the seams on the roof have many scratches and portions of the seam appear to be inconsistent with normal appearance. And they go on to say, they believe that this is either caused by a defective seaming machine or improper use of the seamer machine. There's also mentioned at the meeting that the panels were installed prior to the seamer being used. This is not best practice because it allows the panels to pull from each other as it's being seamed. Since the wall roof is weather tight and cannot be taken apart and reinstalled, they are proposing that cover piece that Mr. Bon Jovi had mentioned to cover the seam. So the support service committee is still, the jury is still out in regards to a final acceptance. So if any board member has any input into your feelings, and I did cast this letter around to most of our board members, and I believe at the last meeting you were able to review the photos and the letter of, the notice of noncompliance. So if you have any feelings as far as what the support service committee should consider, we're open to that. We threw out a bunch of suggestions today, like Mr. Bon Jovi said about extending warranty and et cetera, et cetera. But if you feel in the best interest of the taxpayers, that you, and hopefully you do the same with work at your own house, that you're not going to accept something that has an appearance that it wasn't done in a professional manner. And that's pretty much where we are with the capital project.
I have a few questions, just on that roof. How are we confident that it is weather tight sealed? I mean, I know it states it in that letter.
Don't think we're...
We had that conversation today.
Going to be confident?
Don't think we have 100% confidence.
Correct?
I mean, I think at the base of it for me is to say, number one, they need to somehow show us that that is a weather tight seal, because without that, take the roof off or we're going to... I mean, if it's not, we can't, you know, I don't want to be a position where we accept something less than what we paid for, and then three years down the road, we're dealing with all leaks chasing them around.
The main crux of it is, it is supposed to be a thirty-year roof.
Right. So even ten years, fifteen years down the road, dealing with leaks all over, I mean, I wouldn't, I wouldn't deal with that at my own house, and I wouldn't accept it here either. So I think that's at the base of it, before I would even consider anything to approve the appearance. That's one thing. If you can't prove that it's functional first, then...
That's, that's improving the appearance of those caps, it's also an added layer of a statement. But we are considering...
Right, but if it's not, if it's not weather tight, I don't want just something over it.
But we're, it's doing two things.
Yeah.
It's a parish and it's a leak, but we are not discounting at all that. Possibly we will be taking that roof life. That's a possibility to replacing it with a new roof. And that would, that was, you know, that would be on a part of the general contract. They would be ultimately responsible for that. So that's a possibility to...
What magnitude of dollars are we talking about for that roof?
I don't, I don't know what they're aligning both for that. I'm going to say, the labor material here, here anywhere is near, you know, seventy-five to a hundred thousand.
If the roof were going to be removed and reinstalled, would it be the same roof? That would do it, or would we get some out and do that one?
It would be the same roof material, new roof material, would be the same, same material. It wouldn't, they can't remove that and reinstall, it would have to be brand new material. I'm sure it's... I'm sure the district, district and the board would request a certified installer and a representative from the manufacturer to be on-site while it's being done.
So it would not be the same room installing?
It could be, under the supervision of the manufacturer. Anyone else have any questions? Okay.
That's all I have, complete?
All right. Any questions for the superintendent? In regard to school closing the last couple of days or the sports?
Give me the last question.
Do you believe that there are sports in the spring in halls? Are no spectators being allowed? Do you have that pixel lock system placed that means vehicles collapse?
So the Pixelot is operational in the gym, but there's not going to be any competitions in the gym. Our hope is that it would be operational for the spring, but we're still having problems with the unit. But the gym works.
I think that we can't get the news, maybe some district services? Life, the life services? Should we look into outside of that Pixelot system?
Right, if that Pixelot system isn't working, certainly, I don't want to, we'll have to look into what we would have to get or do to livestream because I think that would be important. I agree with you, Mrs. Adoma, that that's something we would want to do for our public so that they can see the games being played on the field, or fields. So we'll explore that.
Any other questions for the superintendent? Okay, we'll move on to Board of Education, New Business, Certification of Lead Evaluators of Classroom Teachers. Be resolved, Board of Education pursuant to the provisions of Education Law, Section 3012-D and Part 30-3.10, the Regents' Rules hereby certify for following individuals that completed all the necessary training to be certified as lead evaluators of classroom teachers. Ms. Goseley Lennick, Mr. Boyd, Mr. Zimmer, Mr. Freer, Ms. Fullburn, Mr. Darling, Mr. Murphy, Mr. Judge. Can I have a motion, please? Motion by Heather, second by Camille. Discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? So carry. Certification of Lead Evaluators of Building Principals. Be resolved, Board of Education pursuant to the provisions of Education Law, Section 3012-D and Part 30-3.0, the Regents' Rules hereby certify for following individuals that completed all the necessary training to be certified as lead evaluators of building principles. Mr. Bon Jovi and Miss Felicity Lennick. Can I have a motion, please? Motion by Heather, second by Tom. Discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? So carry. High School District Board of Education, Policy First Reading, Policy Number 6551, Family Medical Leave Act, Policy 7250, Student Paternity Rights, Parental Access to Information Administration of Certain Physical Examinations to Minors, Policy Number 7240, Students' Records Access and Challenge, Policy Number 7242, Student Directory Information, and Policy 7270, Rights of Non-Vestorial Parents. This is our first reading. I'm sure not everyone had the opportunity to review all that. I want to thank the committee again for their work on bringing these policies to the board for approval and update our policy manual. We'll take this to our next meeting for a second reading, and hopefully at that time, we'll be able to approve it. In the meantime, if you have any questions regarding these policies, you can reach out to Mr. Bon Jovi, your assistant superintendent, and voice your concerns, and they will be updated. I believe they will also be vetted by...
So these have all been vetted by our attorney, and then reviewed by the committee. And then we have our next committee meeting, I believe, is this coming Monday.
Good. Okay, does anyone have any issues of moving it to a second reading at this point? All right, we'll move it to a second reading. Old business, we've had our capital project update. Our next meeting finally is going to be our first building tour of the elementary school on December 16th, which is our next board meeting. Anything for the good welfare of the district?
Have any veterans ready to all the vets?
Thank you. And we'll now open the meeting up to public comment, general items. And we'll close public comment. Need a motion to adjourn to go into executive session for administrator evaluation? Have a motion, please? Motion by Heather, second by Mike. All in favor? Opposed? So carry. Thank you, everyone, and have a...
Have a good Veterans Day. Thank you to all our veterans, you know, highlighted earlier.
Thanks, guys. Have a good day.
Turn the camera off.